Good evening, everybody. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, March 19th, 2025 to order. At this time, we will have a moment of silence for whatever you have on your heart or on your mind tonight. So, moment of silence, please. I'm going to ask Alderman Dunn now to please rise and, everybody rising, lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian, will you please call the roll?
R Dunn?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Reinhardt?
Here.
Gripp?
McGinnis?
Here.
Newton?
Lynch?
Here.
T Dunn?
Here.
Jobjen?
And Burkholder?
Here.
Seven, President Mayor Pro Tem?
And so, we do have a quorum tonight. We do have a few folks out. This is a vacation week, and I hope everybody who's, maybe you have family that are out as well, and I hope they're having a great time. So, in any case, let's go forward. Our meeting protocol and decorum. Good evening. As we begin this meeting of the Committee of the Whole, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and those who are viewing the meeting on your computer or mobile device. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions. Please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with fellow Davenporters and with viewers throughout the region, as a committee of the whole meetings are recorded and available online for viewing. We're happy you're participating in your city government and ask that your participation reflect the common desire we all share to make Davenport an even greater place for all citizens. For those in attendance and those watching at home, I thank you for joining us. At this time, please turn off or silence your cell phones or other electronic handheld devices so they don't interfere with anyone who may be speaking. If you wish to address the council on a specific item that appears on the agenda, you are asked to do so during the discussion of that item. And I will, the people will be asking you to step forward, so that will be clear. Please step to the podium, wait to be recognized by the chair, and state your name and ward or address. Please address the council as a body and not to an individual. And when you come to the podium, the mic is that little green light, so that's, you need to stand close to the podium and, and near that light, and then we'll, we'll be able to hear you and hear you on the recording. You will have five minutes for those agenda items. I ask that everyone observe, and I know you all will, the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Thank you. Is there a city administrator update tonight this afternoon?
There is, Your Honor. Just a couple of items. Number one is, the Illinois Department of Transportation is hosting a public meeting on the Centennial Bridge Quarter Project on Thursday, April 17th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. That'll be at the Holiday Inn in downtown Rock Island. The purpose of that meeting is to allow the affected communities to learn about the project, ask questions, share input on the future of the bridge. IDOT is also forming a community advisory group that will help guide the planning process, and I'll be sending out some information to you about nominations for that and how you go about doing that. And secondly, we, we got some information back from Moody's on Tuesday. As you know, we had a trip to Chicago last week with some rating presentations, both with Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. Our bond rating remains in AA2, AA2, but the outlook has changed from stable to positive, which is, which is a good outcome for us. Among the strengths listed by Moody's is a strong available fund balance and liquidity ratios, and I think we're expecting something from Standard &amp; Poor's later this week. And then finally, the Director of Civil Rights has requested a follow-up joint meeting between the Civil Rights Commission and the City Council. The request stated that there was a joint agreement to hold a follow-up meeting 90 days after the August 2024 meeting. A scheduling call will be sent out to determine your availability, and we'll see if we can get that scheduled here in a timely fashion. So, that's all I have.
We do have four public hearings this evening. We have two under community development and two under public works. The first two are under community development. Alderman Reinhardt will lead this public hearing. Alderman Reinhardt, please.
Thank you, President Pro Tem. I open the first public hearing for case ROW 25-01, being the request of the City of Davenport to vacate a portion of the alley right-of-way location north of Locust Street between Bell Avenue and Dougalby Street, Ward 5. Please note that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends denial. Is there any public with comment? If so, please step to the podium and state your name, address, and ward.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Michael Malloy. I'm a Bettendorf attorney with offices at 2535 Tech Drive, and I am here tonight to representing Sean Egan, a Davenport resident and real property owner at 2342 East Locust Street in Davenport. Sean's real property is located adjacent to and abutting the alley right-of-way that this public hearing pertains to. Sean strongly opposes this right-of-way vacation, as do the overwhelming majority of the neighborhood. The Davenport Plan Zone Commission thoroughly reviewed this request at three different meetings the past two months, January 21st, February 4, and February 18th of this year. The Commission spent much time on this request because of its unusual character. The Commission listened to public comments on the request, watched the city presentation, and thoroughly discussed whether or not it was in the public interest to vacate this alleyway. Your Commission resoundingly voted no to the alley vacation, and the City Council should also follow that recommendation and vote no on this also. This alleyway unquestionably serves a public interest and is used by the residents living at 2342 East Locust Street for egress onto Locust Street. The Commission resoundingly voted eight to one to deny this 8,800 square foot alley vacation of public right-of-way proposed by the City of Davenport. First, there was strong opposition from the surrounding real property owners on both the north and the south sides of the alley. No one wanted the alley vacated except for one property owner. This is only beneficial to one property owner. There are 120 Davenport citizens who signed a petition opposing this vacation. You have that petition, I believe, in your packets today. Second, the right-of-way alley serves a public purpose of allowing safe access to Dougalby Street from the alley and then at this, a safe intersection of Dougalby and Locust to enter east or west on the Locust Street. The alleyway not only serves a public purpose, but it also serves a public benefit by allowing any resident at 2342 East Locust Street access safely to Locust. Third, the city has constructed a five-foot-high cement retaining wall on the north sidewalk of Locust Street. This cement wall impedes and blocks a motorist's view of westbound Locust traffic and impedes safe access to Locust Street from Mr. Egan's private driveway. The cement city wall does not even meet today's standards that the city imposes under the 30% triangle rule for intersections that says that there cannot be a fence or other obstruction that prevents a person from viewing traffic at a particular intersection involving city public right-of-way. That's under Section 17.09030 of the city code. The Plan and Zone Commission believes that the cement wall that's currently there creates a major safety hazard for any citizen exiting from the driveway at 2342 East Locust Street and trying to actually go east onto Locust Street from that location. Fourth, trying to make the vehicle exit, exit at 2342 East Locust Street onto Locust Street requires a motorist to stop on the sidewalk even to view traffic coming in the westerly direction, thus blocking the sidewalk on Locust Street. Of course, there's a school close by to the east of this location where children are using the sidewalk to walk home from school or to go to school. This is another traffic hazard because it doesn't allow a motorist to actually see the traffic going west on Locust Street without actually going on to the sidewalk because of the vision issue presented by the city cement wall. And city section, city code section 10.64020 prohibits a vehicle from stopping and standing in a sidewalk area. In sum, I would say that there is no valid reason to vacate this alleyway. The public does not want it and strongly objects to the alleyway vacation. Please listen to your Plan and Zone Commission, your elected, your appointed, recommendatory body in this matter, who spent hours reviewing this matter at their three meetings before overwhelmingly rejecting the proposal. Please also listen to the citizens of Davenport who signed a petition opposing the alley vacation. There's no support for this. The same request, by the way, was previously filed by the City of Davenport two years ago, in the spring of 2023. The city withdrew their 2023 request before the ill-advised request even came before the City Council. We don't understand why it's coming before the council again. Keep this alleyway in place. It's used. The alleyway serves a public purpose. Please vote against vacating this alleyway. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for me? There'll be other people that want to speak opposing this also.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Please step to the podium, give me your name and where you live. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Corey Volkers, and I work for Townsend Engineering at 2224 East 12th Street in Davenport. We're representing the owner of 2342 East Locust and are opposed to vacating the existing alleyway. We believe that it would be a significant safety issue for anyone exiting the property to be forced directly onto Locust Street without the option of the alley due to the existing retaining wall that is there on site. We provided a survey for Mr. Egan of the property and located the existing property pins. We also prepared a drawing showing the visibility triangle, as Mr. Malloy brought up. That was based off of the city Davenport current code number 17.09.030, Item H, which references the construction of walls and fences. And the triangle shows the retaining wall does not meet the current code and would not be allowed to be constructed with today's standards. Is there any questions that I could answer?
Anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to, I'll take a moment. During public hearings, we can't respond, we listen, but later in the agenda, the council may have questions, and they would take them up. So, that's just a general rule when doing public hearings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? State your name and where you're from.
My name's Steve May. I live at 2356 East Locust Street. I'm in the fifth ward. I live on the corner of East Locust and Dougalby. I put together some pictures for you guys to show you the front of 2342 East Locust. Since 2008, that's just going back off of Google's Street View. It was before that also. There was no alleyway, there was no gravel, there was no public access back there. The, the property was purchased in 2017, I believe, with a grass backyard. In 2018, the owner of the property made a personal driveway for his tenants to use, leading onto the city easement. The alleyway is not up to city code or standards, and there were no permits pulled to put it City Code 1212145, permits specified in Chapter 1228 shall be required for all driveway construction on public right-of-way or public easements. City Code 1212140, construction of any special driveway or intersection to a driveway shall be under the full control of the Director of Construction and Engineering, and all rules and requirements pertaining to the construction thereof shall be subject to the approval of council. I'm not aware of council having approved any such construction or installation of gravel. I've reached out to Matt Weidrich, asking for permits, and they couldn't provide any for me. I attached pictures of, it would be facing the west from Dougalby. When I purchased my house, and then I also attached the listing for my house, and I highlighted the area where it's described as, don't quote me word for word, but it says there's parking north of the shrubs, you could park an RV or boat there. The, the issue here is, this isn't an alleyway because it's not up to standards. If it's going to be considered an alleyway, it either needs to be brought up to city standards and developed, or it needs to be vacated. I can't use that alley. If I travel west, the only way to get out is on 2342's property, which I've been told I will be trespassing if I go that way. If this isn't vacated, I look forward to hearing plans and a timeline of when the city plans on developing the alley. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, members of council. I am Sean Egan. I reside at 828 Waverly Road, Davenport, Iowa. I have lived in the city of Davenport for 37 years. I own 2342 East Locust. I did extend my driveway in my yard to the alley. There was, excuse me, there was existing gravel in the back that we connected into, and we started using that as a safe access and not using Locust as egress and ingress off of our property. I, Sean Egan, strongly object to the alley vacate. Barbara Williams, Sam and Jennifer Foley, Sheila Craig, all north of the alley, strongly oppose I have. Documentation notarized, which should be in your packets, I believe. I have the petition, should be in your packets, I believe. 120-plus petitioners. The Mays will tell you they don't use the alley. Could you put that picture up, please? The Mays use this alley every day, coming from the new garage that they built. They've got gravel in their driveway, so they've added gravel. So, gravel's not the issue here. Okay. No, wrong one. This is the Mays use, that's their garage. They use the alley on a daily basis to get out onto Dougalby. Yeah, they can't go west because it's a dead end. It's a dead-end alley. They're there all over the city. In Mays' building permit, it states paving to extend to property line abutting the alley. That means he's going to use egress and ingress to use the alley. And there's the building permit, it's on city website. Public purpose refers to benefits to the general public or for use that is considered to be of public interest, not just for private benefit of one sole individual. And/or that intended use of property must serve a public benefit, such as safety. You've heard already about the safety issues pulling out on the Locust from my driveway. My tenants, us as workers, city people, conveyance, there is only one resident that would benefit from any conveyance of this alley. The Commissioner's statement is charged by making recommendations to the City Council on matters that pertain to the city's comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan, which is used to guide development and redevelopment. I'll say it again, redevelopment, not to recede, regress, or have city decline. I'd like to build a garage on that property. I'm not going to do that because people, it's hard to rent that property if you've got to just use Locust Street going in and out. People told me that. We're not renting this. Oh, you got access? Yeah, we can do that. It's a rental property. The city does use the alley. Code enforcement officers park in that alley to do my rental certification inspections, anywhere from a year to four years. The Commission voted eight to nine for denial, eight out of nine for denial of the alley vacate, which you've heard. If the valley is vacated, it's only time before somebody majorly gets hurt on Locust. Could we save a life? Why are we vacating this anyway? I don't want you to do nothing to it. The neighbors to the north don't want you to do nothing to it. We don't want you to spend no money on it. It works fine the way it is, just like a thousand different gravel alleys that are in the city of Davenport. Council members, you have a great responsibility to do tonight, not to vacate. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Step up to the podium, please name, give me your name and where you live.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Quant. I live at 2115 West Fifth Street. I did some work over at that house for Sean Egan, my brother-in-law. I also rent from him. I would never rent that house. That, I tried to go down that, to go out onto Locust Street, and I backed up and went the other way. I highly oppose vacating this alley. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Please state your name and where you're from.
Good evening, council. My name is Kayla Fielder. I live at 2744 East 50th Court in Davenport. I am the property manager of 2342 East Locust Street, so if there's ever anything with that property that says I do go there, I would, I'm strongly opposed to this. There's no way that it is not a safety issue for not only myself or whoever's at the property leaving, but those that are on, are westbound on Locust. So, I went and took pictures as well. This is a picture with the wall in the front with my car at the curb. You can't, the pedestrian or whoever was at the car can't see me in the car. I can't see them that are coming down the street. And then, this is the view. No, no.
Sorry.
You can get this to the clerk.
Yep.
And then, this is from inside my vehicle looking down the street. As you can see, that there is a retaining wall along Locust Street that hinders the ability to perceive oncoming traffic as well as pedestrians. I think that's all I really have. But yes, it is a huge safety issue. You cannot see, the visibility is not there. As they said, the triangle, it does not meet the modern-day triangle visibility. Down on Bell, there is a similar wall, but that you can get further away from the wall to try to look at traffic. This, you're right against the wall, and it's five foot two, I believe, is the size of the wall, and it's only about five foot 10 from the curb. So, most vehicles, where you sit, you're an easy five foot from the front end of your bumper. So, and I would like all of you to go drive it. Go try it for yourself, go down the alley and pull out onto Locust Street and see how you would feel about if that was your only access to that property. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Please state your name and where you're from.
Hi, my name is Cindy Egan. I reside at 828 Waverly Road, and I am the owner of 2342 East Locust Street also. I strongly oppose to this vacate. It is a safety hazard. I know there was a survey done that showed no accidents reported. However, I truly believe that's because nobody will pull out of the driveway of 2342 because of the vision that you just, you can't see anything coming. You literally have to roll down your window to hear vehicles coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please state your name and where you're from.
My name is Sydney Foley, and I'm the current tenant at 2342 East Locust, and thank you to the council for being here. I just wanted to reiterate what everyone before me has said. It's a huge safety concern pulling onto Locust. I lived there since October, and I have never tried to go onto Locust except for one time when I had just moved in, couldn't see anything, scared me, I reversed back. It's not just the fear of hitting a car, but we're close to the hospital, we're close to a school, and hitting a pedestrian, a bicyclist, anybody that could be trying to commute on Locust is incredibly scary, so I just wanted to say that I oppose the vacation of this alleyway. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Please step to the podium, name and where you're from.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Foley. I am the mother of the tenant, Sydney Foley, who currently resides at 2342, and I just wanted to go on record also that I strongly oppose. I obviously visit quite often, and I would never exit through, you know, we'd always go through the alleyway, it's the safest way. I worry if she ever tries to attempt to go out that way. And if it was safe, believe me, I don't think she would go around the longer way. If she thought it was safe to go out the easy way, she certainly would do so, and so would we. So, I just wanted to say that I strongly oppose it for safety issues and reasons also. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Please state your name and where you're from. Thank you.
My name is Aubrey Sennett. I live at 2304 West Third Street. I also am a tenant of Sean Egan's. I've done work at that property on East Locust Street, and I have also rented from him for a while previously and just now current. That is one property that I would not ever rent from if that was the only access way to the house. It is very, it's scary, honestly. I've driven there in my smaller car, and then I've also been in a bigger vehicle and trying to pull out of that driveway. I, I backed up and went down the alley that is trying to, they're trying to vacate. I strongly oppose to vacate this alley. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Please step to the podium and name and where you're from.
Scott Forrest, 2404 West 59th Street.
Scott Forrest, 2404 West 59th Street, and oppose the vacate. I have a Chevy Silverado and I've driven, actually driven the property. And as the other person had said, you pretty much have to be either in the street or very close to the street to see. And traffic flies up and down that road all the time if you've ever been in that stretch. So I oppose the vacate.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Seeing no one else, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, same sign. This one will move on. I open the second public hearing on the recommended allocation for year 51, July 1st, 2025, January 30th, 2026, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Funds for All Wards. Is there anyone with comment from the public? Seeing no one, I move to close the public hearing. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Public hearing is closed and back to you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. The next public hearings are under Public Works and Alderman Rick Dunn will lead these public hearings. Alderman, Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Open first public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Oak Street, 2804 Oak Street to West 29th Street reconstruction project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. Open the second public hearing on the planned specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2025 high-volume roadway resurfacing program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. With a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed and back to you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I'm going to take a point of privilege and we have people in the room that aren't here every meeting. There is a chance to talk about this again, anything on the, within the committees during the body of the meeting. We don't vote at the committee of the whole. We, the voting will come next week, but, so I just wanted to let everybody, if you don't understand the process, to let you know that, okay? Okay, so now we go to petitions and communications from council members. And do we have anything from anybody tonight? I don't see anything, but I have a couple of things on behalf of Third Ward. I wanted to let everyone know that there will be a meeting tomorrow night to review the final plans for parking spots at the exterior of Riverview Terrace along Clay Street near Washington Street. The meeting is here at 6:30. Small parks like Riverview, while public, but also very close to private property, include residential input to a greater degree than, say, perhaps a Van Devere or a larger park would. A few years ago, in response to neighborhood concerns about what I will call misbehavior, and you can figure out what that is, going on in the park during the day and evenings, the entrances were closed and most of that misbehavior vanished. I talked to someone today and people are picnicking and having their lunches there and riding their bikes and all kinds of things, which is what we want to happen in our parks. Since that time, there have been temporary parking spots, not well-marked, and none of an accessible nature placed at the entrances of the old driveway. And there's two entrances into that park. Staff with neighborhood input has developed plans that will place legally-stripped parking spaces at each entrance to allow public access to this small park. So the plan attempts to balance that input of the neighbors with the right of the public to enjoy the park. And so that's what that meeting is about. I have invited neighbors. If anyone else says come, if they're interested, feel free. And that's tomorrow night at 6:30, right here in council chambers. The second thing I wanted to do is to thank everybody who came last night to the Third Ward meeting regarding the resurfacing of West Third Street from Telegraph to Harrison. This is a long-awaited project. It is a massive project. It's one of two. Fourth will be next year. And we had a presentation on how this will move forward. And it will be completed, the goal is to complete it by the end of this season. I will be getting out to Third Ward, you know, sort of an overview of what happened last night, but I wanted to thank staff and everybody who attended with very good questions, including Alderman Burkholder and Alderman Rip Dunn. So, and the, just to let everyone know, here's a heads up, that resurfacing starts at the West End on March, about March 31st. So it will be coming very soon. So that's all I have. Else, so let's move forward. We're going to move to four, our four areas of discussion, community development, public safety, public works, and finance. Our first area to be discussed, community development. Alderman Reinharts will lead the discussion and will set his own agenda. Alderman Reinharts, please.
Thank you. We have three items on the community development agenda this evening. First is third consideration of ordinance for case RE 225-02, being the request of Anthony Proprieties, Properties to rezonate approximately 1.15 acres of land located on the northern portion of 5670 Tremont Avenue from I-1 Light Industrial to RMF, multifamily residential district. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment? If so, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and if you have, now five minutes. Counsel? This item will move on. The next item is the first consideration ordinance for the case R0W 25-01, being the request of the city of Davenport to vacate a portion of the alley right away located north of Locust between Bell Avenue and Dougalby Street. Please note that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial. Before I ask the public to come forward, I'd like to ask City Administrator Maximer, where are we with this project?
I'm going to ask Laura Berkeley to step forward and just make a brief overview of this, if she would, please. She's a little more intimately involved with it, so.
Laura Berkeley, Development Neighborhood Services. So I think Attorney Moyle gave a fairly detailed analysis of what happened. Just to speak a little bit more about why it was withdrawn back in 2023. That was in the spring of 2023. There were a lot of questions that were out there at the time. Staff capacity to answer those weren't available. It was withdrawn for the time being. Staff was asked to revisit as this was an unresolved matter and that's why it came back this year. It is correct, the plan self-commission has recommended denial. One person in favor, eight were against this vacation. And largely it was due to safety-related issues on accessing the property onto Locust.
Thank you. All right, now I'll ask for any public with comment. Counsel? Oh, I'm sorry.
I still oppose this. I don't understand why it was even up on the agenda with the commission. I really don't. I do oppose this strongly for the safety reasons and we use it, city uses it. There's no reason for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel? Anybody? Are you done? Okay. I think we'll. Okay.
I'm just curious, who is responsible for the retaining wall?
So the city engineer, Brian Chat, had done a lot of research related to when the Locust Street had been widened. And he has yet to find any information related to ownership over the retaining wall itself. There aren't any temporary construction easinesses associated with the property that would have led to believe that that was why the retaining wall was constructed. So we don't have a clear answer on why the retaining wall was constructed or who owns it.
I don't need an answer today, but legally, if something happens with a retaining wall, who is the liable person? Is it the homeowner, is it the city? Don't need that answer today.
Thank you. Alderman Lunt.
Thank you. I, I'm sorry, Mrs. Berkeley, I do have another question for you. It's kind of in conjunction with Alderman Dunn's question on the retaining wall. What would it take to get the wall into compliance? So it reflects today's standards.
So in the conversations with city engineer, Brian Chat, who isn't here today. He will be available next week, I think. So the code reference related to zoning code is specific to fences, actually. It doesn't actually reflect retaining walls. However, in the engineering world, there is a different vision of triangle and it has to do with the speed of traffic coming at you. And in our conversations, the retaining wall would have to be completely removed.
Oh, okay. And what about the, what about the alleyway not being to code? Is that, is that an accurate statement or is there something? I guess, do you have any, and perhaps you don't have it now. I am curious to know if, is it, is it, is it a safe alleyway, right? I mean, is it in compliance with our today's standards? That is a very valid question.
I think we'll get an answer back to you.
Okay, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. What? No one else? Speaking from here, I'd like to see this item left on discussion. We still have a lot to discuss. So I'll move on. The last item on the community development agenda is a motion approving the allocation for year 51, July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026, Community Development Block Grant Funds and Home Investment Partnership Home Funds. Is there anyone from the public wish to comment on this? Is there anyone from council? This item will move on. I will set the agenda. I make a motion to place items number one and number three on consent and number two to remain on discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Back to you, Mayor.
Again, I'll take a point of privilege and explain what that means for folks who are here tonight about this issue. When we put things on discussion, it means that they are treated separately. Next week, they are at the very, they're, after whatever comes at the beginning of the meeting, they are voted on separately. When we, everything that goes in consent, it's voted with one vote. So this will be up for discussion, which means if you wish to come with public comment, you can do that next week. So just to explain what that means, okay? Thank you. Moving on, our second area to be discussed is public safety. Alderman Tim Dunn will lead this discussion and Alderman Burkholder will set the agenda. Alderman T. Dunn, please.
Okay, tonight, we have five items on the public safety agenda this evening. First is a second consideration ordinance amending chapter 10.68, entitled miscellaneous rules of the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa, by adding thereto definitions and restrictions to the use of motorcycles and motorized bicycles on public sidewalks, all wards. Is there any public with comment? Okay, seeing none, counsel? Okay, this item will move on. The second item is second consideration ordinance amending chapter 10.84, entitled bicycles on the municipal code of Davenport, Iowa, by changing the titles to bicycles and motorized micro mobility devices, adding thereto a new section with definitions, a new section regarding riding multiple or multi-use pass trails and including regulations and restrictions for electric bikes, e-bikes on public sidewalks. Any public with comment? Okay, seeing none, counsel? Okay, this item will move on. Third is item, is a resolution approving street lane public ground closures, request enlisted dates, times for outdoor events. I'll read these all before asking for comment. Project renewal, Fitfest, 906 West Fifth Street, 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., Saturday, April 26, 2025. Closure of West Sixth Street to Marquette Street to Gaines Street, Orange Street to West Fifth Street to West Sixth Street, Ward Three. Davenport Parks and Recreation, Doggy Egg Hunt, Centennial Dog Park, 315 South Marquette Street, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Saturday, April 26, 2025. Closure, South Marquette Street, South City Maintenance Facility to the north of Byterbeck Drive, Ward Three. St. Anthony Catholic Church, bilingual parish mass, 417 North Main Street, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., Sunday, May 4, 2025. Closure Main Street from West Fourth Street to Fifth Street, Ward Three. Mississippi River Distill Company Downtown Lounge, Garage Band, Live Music and Alternating Currents, 318 East Second Street, various dates and times, see attached schedule. Closure, East-West Alley between East Second Street and East Third Street from Iowa Street to Mid-American Parking Lot, Ward Three. Are there any public with comment? Okay, seeing none, counsel? Okay, this item will move on. And the fourth item is a motion approving noise variance request and enlisted dates for outtime outdoor events. Mississippi River Distilling Company Downtown Lounge, Garage Band, Live Music, Alternating Currents, 318 East Second Street, various dates and times, see attached schedule. Outdoor music band over 50 dB, Ward Three. Are there any public with comment? Okay, seeing none, counsel? Okay, this item will move on, I'm sorry. The last item is on the public safety agenda is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. I will read those under section A, new license, new owner, temporary permit, outdoor area, location transfer, et cetera. Ward Three, Mississippi River Distilling Company, Mississippi River Distilling Company LLC, 318 East Second Locust, or East Second Street, temporary outdoor area, May 30th through 31st, June 27th through the 28th, July 25th through the 26th, August 14th through the 17th, August 29th to the 30th. License type C liquor on premises. Any public with comment? Seeing none, counsel? Okay, this item will move on. Items under section B, annual license renewals with outdoor areas noted are on the, on, for your review. There's also a section C request for 19, 20-year-old exemption, which I will read, Ward Three, at the Stardust, at the Stardust LLC, 218 Iowa Street. License type Class C liquor on premises. Is there any public with comment? Okay, seeing none, counsel? Okay, seeing none. I would like Alderman woman Burkholder to please set our agenda.
Thank you. I make a motion to put all items on public safety to the consent agenda.
Okay, motion is moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same?
Thank you, Alderman Tim Dunn, Alderman Burkholder. Our third area to be discussed is public works. Alderman Rick Dunn will lead this discussion. And Alderman Kelly will set the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Item number one is a resolution wording of contract for the West Loop Trail Phase One project, Langman Construction Incorporated of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $841,489.01 and one penny, subject to the Iowa Department of Transportation concurrence. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution wording of contract for the Main Street Palmer Drive to Locust Street resurfacing project to Hawkeye Paving Corporation of Davenport, Iowa in the amount of $761,148. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution wording of contract for the West Lombard Court Reconstruction Project to Airworks LLC of Long Grove, Iowa in the amount of $208,557. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution wording of contract for the FY 2026 Iowa DOT Full Depth Patching Program to AmeriCorps LLC of Muscatina, Iowa in the amount of $133,460.60. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Counsel? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution awarding one-year, awarding one-year contracts with the option to one-year
the option to one-year extension for the 2025 sidewalk and ADA ramp program to Leveraged Services LLC of Bettendorf, Iowa in the initial amount of $200,000. Felton Concrete of Dyerville, Iowa in the initial amount of $200,000. And Kelly Construction of Davenport, Iowa in the initial amount of $300,000. And authorizing the Director of Engineering and Capital Projects to increase the contract funding allocation based on performance and needs not to exceed a cumulative total of $965,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
William Pamper in Seventh Ward. I've been here many times on this situation, but why is there not a standard design? How can these contractors go out there and do their work if they don't have an idea what they're doing without a kind of design? I was, I watched them do my corners around my house and basically the contractor's going like, okay, what do you want? And they go out there and say, okay, we want this, we want that. Okay, we ended up with rounded curves where curves shouldn't have ever been. Some have square corners on them. One alley has rounded curves on one side and square corners on the other. There's no standard design or application. Another problem we had, since the crown of the road is somewhat higher than the handicap accessibility ramps, when you have heavy rains like we did today, you have puddles sitting in the ramps. It washes dirt down or gravel down or it sits in the handicap in our accessible ramps. We have a lot of people in my neighborhood who do walk dogs, take walks, buff their kids, everything else. They go around my neighborhood and you look at every one of the corners and every one of the corners is different. Some have a setback, some are right on the corners, some have a split. There's no standard design. But to tender, give these guys a chance, especially if you're going to have a bonus deal, basically is what that is, for the contractors. Let them know what they need to do first. Why are we giving a blank check to Director of Engineering for something that should be under contract and design phase anyway? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six. Go, council. Alderman Lynch.
Thank you. I do have a question for staff regarding this funding, if someone can answer. Thank you. For clarification, the $965,000, is that including the initial $700,000? Or is that in addition to? So we're starting with 200, 200, and 300? And then is the 965 on top of that in the event we need it?
It's a cap. So the idea is we are adjusting this kind of how we do our sewer lateral repair program and our emergency sewer repair program. Those contracts are styled in this manner. And since we have multiple contractors, one of the issues we've had over the years is we may, with these specific ones, when it turns, when it comes to sidewalks, ADAs, is we may have underperforming contracts. And so therefore that limits our ability to go out and fix things when we are having issues, especially in the middle or toward the end of the year. By doing it this way, we have three contractors in which to pick from. Let's say if one particular contractor is not doing well, we can pull their quantities. So they, they are getting less work. And this gives us the authorization to then, perhaps if one or the other, or two of them are doing well, we can then hand them more work within the budget that you currently have provided us. And that's, that's where that is, is where technically we would just come before the city council with a change order to increase the quantity amount. This just does it instead of coming to you every single time.
Is there a process in which we, are we inspecting each completed project?
Yes, correct. So we have an inspector within the construction division that specifically looks at these particular ones. Now, I'm happy to go talk with the resident and get his specific address. I do know there are times when you go throughout a neighborhood and ADA ramp all do look different. Most of the time that comes down to when they were installed. I, kind of a, from a previous discussion, it's, it's difficult to say why people did the certain things they did 20 plus years ago if you're not here to know the reasons why. But for, for now, yes, we do have standards and we do inspect these along the way.
Thank you. I actually do have several more questions, so I, I think I would like to place this on discussion if we can, and I can, I can follow up with you later. Thank you so much.
Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. If you could come back. So I know we are approving a lot of, of handy, accessible ramps. And I know that, I know, for instance, when we were putting in the street, 13th Street, when that was being resurfaced and we were doing curves, when we were doing accessibility, you know, every single one practically along those streets, those intersections is different because the condition at the, in, at the street is different. The way the sidewalk sits to the street, the amount of space, the width of the sidewalks is different. So, and they, assuming our folks don't go out there and just decide on the spot how they're going to do it. They are, they are working plans, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And so if anyone has an issue, as you said, with that, they can certainly reach out to Public Works if their accessibility, if those things are not working or pooling or whatever, right?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution awarding blanket agreement for purchases of materials for the 2025 construction season to the lowest responsive and responsible bidders. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? When we set the agenda, we'll get there. Thank you. Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution approving the funding agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation in the amount of $3,694,670 for the Fourth Street Rehabilitation Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number eight is a resolution approving the funding agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation in the amount of $143,220 for the Brady Street and 12th Street Traffic Signal Installation Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number nine is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Oak Street, 2804 Oak Street to West 29th Street Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 10 is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the 2025 High Volume Roadway Resurfacing Program. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 11 is a motion awarding a one-year contract with two optional one-year renewals for the mowing services, city-owned parcels to a cut above landscape of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 12 is a motion awarding a one-year contract with two optional one-year renewals for the mowing services of right-of-ways and medians to High Point Lawns LLC of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Cheryl Shagina, Third Ward. I just want to make sure in the contract that maybe there's something in there about them actually getting off the lawn mowers and picking up the trash versus just running over it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well noted. Anyone else? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number 13 is a motion awarding a one-year contract for two optional one-year renewals for the mowing services for city facilities to High Point Lawns LLC of Davenport, Iowa. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number 14 is a motion approving a purchase agreement with Consolidated WF LLC for the acquisition of land necessary for the East 53rd Street and Utica Ridge Intersection Improvement Project in the amount of $64,000. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please, noting that we'd like to keep item number five on discussion?
I sure will. I would like to make a motion to put all items on the consent agenda, including item number five.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign? The agenda is set and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The final area to be discussed tonight is finance. Alderman Lynch will lead this discussion and Alderman, Alderman Tim Dunn will set the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Tonight, we have two items on the finance agenda. Item number one is a resolution setting April 9, 2025 as date for sale of general obligation corporate bonds, Series 2025, and approving preliminary official statement. Anyone from the public wishing to discuss this item? Anyone from council? Item number two is motion approving a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the City of Davenport and the, and the chauffeurs, teamsters, and helpers, local union number 238, teamsters, for the term July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. Anyone from the public wishing to discuss this item? Anyone from council? Okay, I will ask Alderman Tim Dunn to set our agenda.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to put items one and two of finance on the consent agenda. Thank you.
Any opposed? Same sign? This agenda is set. Thank you.
The next area is other ordinances, resolutions, and motions, and we have none this evening. So the next item, is there any public with business? This is anyone wishing to discuss anything which was not on the agenda tonight. So if there's someone who'd like to come forward, please step to the podium, state your name, address or ward, and you will have three minutes. Thank you.
Cheryl Shagina, Third Ward. And I'd like to address the, what you started in the beginning about the meeting tomorrow with Riverview Terrace Park. This is one of the things we received at the meetings for Riverview Terrace Park, and it starts refresh, revitalize, recreate at the top. And let me tell you, when the neighbor originally got hold of the city, it was because she couldn't have her kids in the backyard because there was people pooping in her yard during the day and she couldn't even let her kids out, among other things that they were doing. Since the rocks have been put at the end, that problem has been solved. If you talk to the police department, I'm sure they will tell you there's been less calls at that park. They want to talk about moving a sidewalk. If you talk to the police department, you probably find out there's been less accidents at the park. And if you really listen to the people, instead of moving forward with your own agenda, you would know that if you address the problem at the corner of Washington and Clay and even possibly put in a stop sign at Washington and Clay to slow the people down, you wouldn't need to move the sidewalks inside of the park. Additionally, if you just mark, there's four spots that people use. If you just mark them so someone doesn't park in the middle and make it where only one person can use it, that solves the problem where you've got four parking spots easily available on the east and west ends of the park. Occasionally, people block and they don't allow for that second one to get in there. But if you just put lines in there, it should make it quite obvious that there's parking for four right there at the edge of the park. That park's been there for 130 years. There's no reason to move the sidewalk unless you are just got in your head that you're going to spend a boatload of the city's money. And there's no reason to spend a boatload of the city's money when it doesn't need to be spent. Go over to Jefferson Park and look at Jefferson Park. I think that's on West 15th. That could use the $78,000, $79,000 that somebody wanted to spend on this park. I would suggest that you listen to the residents and it isn't broken, don't fix it. We are quite happy with the rocks being there, they're keeping cars from going inside of the park. I just read some reviews while I was sitting there of people who are saying the clean, how clean the park is. Bring your family, and that's what I've seen this past week when the weather was nice. People going there, the way you want it to be with their kids and enjoying the park, not a bunch of drug deals and worse going on at the park. If you want to spend the $78,000, work on the water and the fact that the water that's coming down is actually destroying the park on the west end of it, down the stairs, and it's created a huge gully, a huge Grand Canyon over there by the stairs where it really isn't safe for anybody. I believe if you make the change or actually, as it is designed right now, you're actually going to open up the city for more liability if you don't address the real issues.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, Judith Lee. I want to say thank you to staff for putting on multiple attorney's fees. They add up to $49,000 among the three. I'm still curious, especially with our maintenance of the debt, if that was a consideration, how much we are actually spending. Our rating is what I'm talking about, how much we're actually spending on attorney fees. And if this is all of them. And my other question is, and I asked this before, is this $49,000 for two weeks and we're not getting the information for the other two weeks? Or, or is this for the month? So I just have a continued question, but again, I want to thank the staff for putting more of the attorneys on the agenda. Thank you.
Anyone else, please come forward.
Yeah, Paul Vasquez, Third Ward, City of Davenport. Before I start, time-wise, point of order, does this have to be specifically about the Davenport business or can it be business like government business overall?
It can be anything you want for three minutes.
Okay, great. Okay, now we start. I want to start by saying, you know, I've talked up here before about, in my opinion, legislatures, you people, elected representatives, what you're supposed to do is build for the future, for the kids coming up, and so on and so forth. What we're supposed to do is ask questions. Make sure you do that. I went to a town hall meeting at Bettendorf Sunday. Representative Meeks was invited there, but she did not show. But anyway, there was a lot of talk about involvement, about, you know, people being, interacting with all the government officials, with getting answers. And there's a lot of things going on in Washington today that are disconcerting. But anyway, a lot of questions, again, came up that I really didn't know, talking about transparency issues with taxes and what they want to cut, what the government, what some people in the government want to cut and what challenges are to keep. So anyway, so I looked it up, I spent some time this morning looking up through the House Committee on the Budget. That way, I wasn't trying to reference what they call fake news or false news or anything. Anyway, what I found this morning was effective last month, according to the House Committee on the Budget in Washington, that what some folks are looking for is a $4.5 trillion tax cut with $450,000 a year, or excuse me, with the tax, with 50% of those tax breaks going to households with $450,000 a year, the rest being corporations and business. Okay? Now, that also, the proposals are also $230 billion to come from food assistance programs, that's where they want to cut. Another $800 billion for Medicare and Affordable Care Acts, that's what they want to cut. Okay, so I went further down and I looked up the programs that they want to take money from. These programs will affect us eventually. They're going to go through a whole sphere of people and sooner or later, they're going to impact everybody. They want to take money from Medicare and Medicaid, elderly assistance, food assistance, childcare assistance, welfare development, student loans, Pell Grants, school lunch programs, Head Start programs, low-income energy assistance, SNAP benefits, food support monies, conservation programs, government oversight committees, the government forum committees, government retirement for employees committees, the cuts in infrastructure bills, oil spill trust fund, consumer protection, climate and environmental policies, the needy family services, social services, block grant, Medicare payments to providers, and they want to repeal the clean energy tax credits. That's what's actually going on. And there's a lot more. There's challenges, you know?
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Are there any other reports of city officials? Nothing tonight? So is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? I see no opposition. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.